Like to call the meeting to order. Roll call of Alderman.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Consilla.
Here.
Alderwoman Pusa.
Here.
Alderman Bitner. Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderwoman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Dillman.
Here.
Alderman Gah.
Here.
Alderwoman Steele.
Here.
Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Weigat.
Here.
Alderman Wiggington.
Here.
Alderman Barfield.
Here.
Okay, I did have a message that, uh, Alderman, uh, Bitner would not be here this evening. Uh, roll call of department heads.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
City Attorney Horner.
Here.
Police Chief Bill Clay.
Here.
Bureau Chief Tom Poor.
Here.
Finance Director Jamie Maitre.
Here.
City Engineer Tim Gregowicz. Director of Maintenance Ken Vaughn. Human Resource Director Sherry Faber.
Here.
Director of Parks and Recreation Debbie Belville.
Here.
Health and Housing Director Bob Sabo.
Here.
Director of Public Works Jason Poole.
Here.
Director of Wastewater Royce Carlyle.
Here.
Director of Economic Development Anissa McCaskill.
Here.
Director of Library Leander Spearmann.
Uh, Tim Gregowicz is excused. He had a vacation day today. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, at this time, if I can ask you to please stand with me, if you're able, for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the republic we serve, with all my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Good evening, uh, welcome to our third meeting in our remodeled facility, so if you haven't been here yet, uh, you'll enjoy gazing around. There's quite a few changes, so, welcome. At this evening, before we start, uh, uh, into the meeting, I just want to go over real quickly. If we had to leave, uh, the meeting, uh, for any unforeseen reasons, for example storms, the police and the staff would, uh, would escort you over through the, through the lobby to the stairway downstairs to a safe storm area in the basement. If we had a situation such as smoke or fire, we had to leave the building, the, you can go out a number of ways now. You, you can, best way still to go out back through the front doors or the back parking, or this is an exit here, but it kind of traps you in that little parking lot if you don't have a little clicker, uh, but you're still be out of the building. Uh, we would ask that you, if we had to leave the building, that you would carefully cross the street and meet in front of the courthouse sign, so we can kind of check with each other and make sure all the people we were sitting with, uh, are also accounted for. We hope that doesn't happen, but we wanted to make sure. There are the restrooms now, which is new. There's some across the lobby that's always been there. They have now been made and updated to being accessible for people with disabilities. And there's also two new ones right behind the wall where the chief stands, but you can go out in the lobby, and there's two new facilities there that meet the, uh, accessibility for disabilities, and the one's even family-friendly with a changing table. So I tell you all that because we're, we're excited about sharing all this new information. Um, we have no public hearing this, this evening, so at this time, I will open public participation. When I call on you, I would ask that you go to the microphone, give your name, and try to keep your comments to two, three minutes max, and, and hopefully it's about a topic in the city pertaining to something that's going on with city business. So at this time, I open public participation. Anyone? Okay, yes ma'am.
With the Bellevue Humane Society, uh, in regards to 11A, I just wanted to say thank you to Mayor Eckert and Jenny, and all of you from Health and Housing and Legal Review for great questions and for taking time to learn about TNR and, and consider it. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else this evening? Hearing none, I will close public participation. Wow. Uh, at this time, I have, uh, three, uh, I'm gonna skip over. I'm gonna do these, I'm gonna go down, use, uh, executive privilege here, and I'm going to do seven C first. Uh, I'm gonna ask these three young ladies to come forward and introduce themselves. Two are from Bellevue East High School, and one is from Bellevue Altoff, and they are here from the Basic Initiative. We got a fourth one here now, too? Another one from Altoff. Well, I'm gonna ask them to come up and introduce themselves, and they are going to, uh, uh, remind us what this month's word of the month is and, and give you a little definition. So ladies, we appreciate you spending a few moments with us.
Hi, I'm Madison Young from Bellevue East.
Hi, I'm Taylor Dell from Bellevue East.
I'm Lauren Borick from Altoff.
I'm Olivia Mellicar from Altoff.
The character word of the month is peace.
And the definition is working and living in harmony with each other.
Ladies, it sounds simple, but sometimes it's not so easy, right? Uh, I just want to say, for those of you in the audience who are not maybe totally aware or totally tuned in, uh, the Basic Initiative, uh, is made up of students from the youth board, is made up of students from east, west, and Altoff. And what do we have, about eight or ten on each, from each school? Is that right? Something like that? Approximately. And they meet at least once a month, and they, they, uh, do mentoring in the, in the grade schools. They pick a fundraiser each year and raise money and donate it to a local charity after they do some studying about the needs in this community. And this has been an outstanding group of individuals who, uh, are out there exemplifying good character. So thank you for coming by this evening, and keep up the good work. And I think, are all of you juniors?
Yes.
Okay, so we're gonna see you for another year at least. Okay, thank you, ladies. Okay, at this time, we, uh, we ended up having a little bit of a change in plan at the last minute during the, uh, rededication of City Hall on the twenty-first of October. And, uh, this morning early, I received a call from Dr. Barker from Lindenwood, that he is, uh, a little bit under the weather today, but he sent his able friend and, uh, assistant, Dr. Thomas Trice, and, uh, Thomas said, "Dr. Trice, if you'd come forward, we want to make a presentation to you and Lindenwood." Yeah, that's a shortcut. Is that a shortcut?
You can even step in. We trust you.
Oh, okay.
Dr. Trice is a longtime law enforcement officer, retired, uh, from Sheriff's Department, but he's been in education now, and he's, what's your exact title? James Davis. But he's going to be, uh, receiving this that, uh, we meant to give to, uh, Dr. Barker, uh, on the day of his rededication. As you know, we were out of this facility for twelve to fourteen months, and, and, uh, to be able to go consistently to the same meeting room that we could get the public into, have access, and then also to have zoning board meetings, and as you know, there are some nights we might get a hundred people, so it took a commitment, and this went on for quite a period of time. This is presented to, uh, Dr. of Lindenwood University Bellevue, in deep appreciation for the meeting space, so generously provided to the city of Bellevue, Illinois during the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen renovation of City Hall. I know it's, uh, a plaque, I love it, if I think so, uh, we don't scratch it up. But, but I just wanted to say, we sincerely express our thanks. They, it didn't charge us anything, uh, the building was always ready to go and set up, uh, it was good for the public to get into Lindenwood, but it was very good for us to have a facility to conduct our business for the city for all those months, and we thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Okay, I guess I'd like to go around the other way a bit shorter. I just kinda like that ramp.
All righty. At this time, is anyone here from any of the nurses here this evening? Well, we do. Okay. Where are you ladies from? Which hospital, or, uh, which organization?
Well, our organization's in the AOR and Southwood, doing my staff report, usually.
Okay, and you're both nurses, and I'm, this proclamation I'm gonna read, you don't have to stand for the whole time, but I, I wanted to make sure I had some, uh, uh, perioperative, I'm saying that right, correct? Okay, the proclamation reads as follows, "Whereas perioperative nurses specialize in the care of patients immediately before, during, and after surgical and other invasive procedures. And whereas serving in settings ranging from traditional hospital-based operating rooms to ambulatory surgery centers and physicians' offices, perioperative nurses work to provide the safest care possible for patients undergoing surgical and other invasive procedures. And whereas perioperative nurses assess individual patients' needs prior to and throughout the surgical or invasive experience, develop implant, implement, and continuously evaluate a plan for the care of the patient and prepare the operating room and patient for their procedure. And whereas perioperative nurses are responsible for monitoring all aspects of the patient's conditions for the duration of each procedure and through professional and patient-centered expertise are responsible for care coordination after the procedure. And whereas patients undergoing surgery and other invasive procedures and their loved ones rely on the skills, knowledge, and exten, experience, uh, and expertise of the perioperative registered nurses who uphold a long tradition of improving surgical safety and the quality of patient care. And whereas perioperative Nurse Week recognizes the contributions perioperative registered nurses make to patient's safety and the opportunities and challenges facing the profession. Now therefore, I, Mark W. Eckert, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Illinois, do hereby proclaim November twelfth through the eighteenth, two thousand seventeen, perioperative Nurse Week." Uh, I would be glad to present this to you, if one of you, both of you want to come forward. And I just want to say, you know, I think there's probably enough of us in the art, uh, in the audience who unfortunately have had to use, uh, procedures and surgeries and these things over the course of our lives. I know in recent years, uh, unfortunately I've had to use it a few more times than I want it, new here, et cetera, but it's, it's when the nursing, uh, professional nurses take this so seriously and do it properly, then patients like me and others don't get infections, and they can come home and recover quickly. So we do present this to you, and we ask you, on behalf of the city of Bellevue, to thank and spread the word to all nurses that we appreciate the professional service. Thank you. Okay, and that concludes the presentations and recognitions. We move on to the regular approval of the minutes. We have the city council minutes from October sixteenth, two thousand seventeen. What's your pleasure? Moved by Alderman Wiggington to receive and file, and second by Alderman Pusa. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of receiving and filing the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have claims, payroll, and dispersments. I'd ask for a motion to approve the claims and dispersments in the amount of one million, eight hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-seven cents, and the payroll in the amount of eight hundred and seventy thousand, three seventy-four and one cent. Motion by Alderman Anthony, second by Alderman Consilla. Any additions or corrections or questions about this, this claim, these claims? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigat.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Motion carries. Treasurers report August and September of two thousand seventeen, we have a statement of cash and investment report August and September of seventeen. Do I hear a motion to receive and file? Motion by Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Steele. Do I hear any questions or additions? Um, all in favor of receiving and filing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a city attorney report, uh, dated November third, two thousand seventeen. Do I hear a motion to receive and file this report? Alderman Gah, second by Alderman Schaefer. Any questions of the city attorney? Hearing none, all in favor of receiving and filing this report signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We go to oral reports. Uh, Alderman Wiggington, you have the ordinance and legal committee's report, please.
I got it. Uh, eleven, uh, dash A one, on behalf of ordinance and legal committee, I'd like to make, make a motion to approve amending Title Nine, General Regulations, Chapter Ninety, Animal Control, Section Ninety Point Zero Six, Animal Care, of the revised ordinances, uh, of the City of Bellevue, Illinois, trap, vaccinate, neuter, release program, so moved.
Motion by Alderman Wiggington, second by Alderman Hazel. Do I hear discussion? I'd like for a roll call vote.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigat.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Motion carries. Uh, Alderman Wiggington, you have another one?
Eleven A dash, eleven dash A two, motion to approve amending Title Eleven, Business Regulations, Chapter One Eleven, Amusement and Recreations Raffles, Section One 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 Point Zero Nine One, of the revised ordinances of the City of Bellevue, Illinois, so moved.
Motion by Alderman Wiggington coming from ordinance. Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Steele. Do I hear any discussion on this, uh, motion? Um, I ask for a roll call vote once again.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigat.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Motion carries. We go to Public Health and Housing, Alderman Pusa.
I have, we have eleven dash B one, a motion to approve scrapping a two thousand and three four turret due to mechanical issues and a hundred and ten thousand plus miles. B I N number one F A F P five five U three three A two one nine six eight three.
We have a motion from Alderman Pusa coming from Health and Housing. Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Hazel. I do know, just for clarification, I had talked to Bob Sabo, um, what they plan to do is, uh, cannibalize some of the parts that can be used on another four turrets the department still has, because this one is shot, and, but there's some parts, right, Bob, where I see you here, there's some parts that you can use on the other one that you still have in service, and I think you even took the tires off because they were newer. So just wanted to answer that so you knew. So we have a motion and a second to, uh...
Who made the second?
Who made the second was, uh, Alderman Hazel.
Okay.
Um, any further discussions or clarification? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigat.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Motion carries. Alderman Pusa, you have one more.
Eleven dash B two, a motion to approve a bid of twenty-six thousand, three hundred dollars from Hank Escalade Incorporated for the expedited demolition, to expedited demolition of Southside Park Improvement Hall located at eight hundred Southwood Street due to safety conditions.
We have a motion by Alderman Pusa. Do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Hazel. Uh, let me explain real quickly. Southside Hall's been around for a long time. It is a city building, uh, probably in the last twenty years it was deeded to the city. Uh, the Southside Association has, does no longer exist. Its, uh, membership has pretty much, uh, dwindled away. Uh, we were waiting kind of to evaluate this, but it came to our attention, we knew that we had the inspectors in, uh, six, eight months ago, Bob, I guess it was, and, and the list of repairs was astronomical, uh, to make the building handicap, uh, accessible for disabled, uh, people with disabilities, and to also, uh, um, deal with all the safety issues, et cetera. But what's happened recently, we received a call, uh, there's a section of the roof where the truss is snapped, and, uh, it became very unsafe, in fact, to the point where we had to quit using the baseball diamond, uh, a few months, about a month or two ago, uh, for safety. We were afraid if this thing gave way, it could actually cause injury to someone using that diamond in the dugout there. So this is now emergency decision. It's, the building is probably ninety-plus years, they estimate, and, uh, uh, with, with the extensive list of work that we looked at to consider discussing remodeling, now with the roof caving in, uh, snapping the trusses, it, we feel it's gotta come down quickly. Hank's estimated, Hank's excavating, uh, is able to do it quickly for this price that was just stated, and has certainly the experience and reputation to handle a project of this size. So is there any other questions? I, I gave that explanation because this is kind of new for some of you. We haven't, we were, thought we were gonna be able to talk about in next year's budget, et cetera, what to do with it. Okay, if there's no further, uh, questions, we do have a, a motion and a second, I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigat.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Motion carries, and, uh, we'll deal with that as quick as we can. Coming from administration, I'd ask for a motion to donate one of the original pews that were in this council chambers, and now there's, I think, six of them up in the balcony, uh, to the Bellevue Historical Society for display at the Mid-Century Museum. Motion by Alderman Rafi and Ovian, and second by Alderman Tyler. Is there any discussion about this? By ordinance, we have to have a motion, just like we, uh, got rid of some, uh, cars to scrap a little bit earlier. We have to motion, have a motion, uh, to get rid of any public property. So if there's no further questions, I do need to ask for a roll call vote.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigat.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Motion carries. At this time, I'd ask for a motion to approve the acceptance of the awarded St. Clair County grant in the amount of fifty thousand dollars for bicentennial barn. Alderman Wiggington, and second by Alderman Steele. Um, I'm excited about this. I just want to say that, um, Mr. Hart and I were talking, and I know Jamie and I talked a little bit. This is happening, I shouldn't say fast, because I know that, that people have been here from the two-hundredth anniversary to talk about a donation that they're interested in making, uh, and this grant, but we don't have the total cost, and we're waiting for the architect to give us some, you know, much more, you know, realistic, I guess is the word, total cost to, to build, develop, build out, and do everything that we need to do. Uh, there's, there's a lot of things that, I'm not trying to be negative, but you gotta run the utilities out there, the sewer and the water, you gotta have parking facilities. Now Debbie and I talked, and there are, some of this, uh, parking and that might be included in the current grant we're working on out there, but I just want to, I want to understand that while I'm all far accepting this grant, we have to take a careful look at when, uh, EWR gets us, and he's been very gracious to donate his, his time on this, uh, but we need to see the cost estimates. He just couldn't get them here today, and we just need to see them, so that we have a, a true picture of what we're agreeing to do, because i- if it's a couple hundred thousand dollars more, we have to make sure where it's coming from. Okay?
And you know, this is, uh, I've read through all this, I've talked to Debbie in length about this. You know, this is pretty exciting for the city.
It is.
And, but you're right, Mayor. It all comes down to the bottom line. And, you know, Debbie is, it's one such a great department. She's fiscally responsible. Carol Bartle's, you know, getting involved in this. Uh, we all know we have a lack of a space for entertainment, so on and so forth. Um, I know it would be a win-win for the city, would help bicentennial park tremendously, but I think by giving, uh, Debbie to go ahead, uh, by accepting this, we're just, you know, the journey of a thousand miles starts with the first step, you know?
I...
This is the first step.
I'm all for it.
And I think, but I think the council, that we all need to understand that until we get the final figures and see where this is gonna end up.
Well, and we haven't awarded any bids yet or anything of that nature, but this is the first step, and I agree, I am all for it, but we have to see hard numbers, uh, before we, you know, move forward in the next. And I'm, I'm just being conscious, because money right now, uh, as we continue to talk in finance and other meetings, is so tight coming from the state. All, all budgetary items are down, and, and we, um, I don't think there's a, a, a three-day period that goes by in a row that, that, that the finance director and I aren't sitting down, sharing our concerns about money, just the way it's going right now. So I just, as long as that's understood, we have a motion, and we do have a second, I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Hazel.
Aye.
Consilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Gah.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Weigat.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Barfield.
Motion carries. Uh, we move on to zoning board, and I'm gonna turn it over to the clerk.
Eleven D one, fifty-seven, October seventeenth, Randy Booker, a request for bulk variants to maintain a site coverage of thirty-nine point seven percent in order to reconstruct a garage at two oh five North Charles Street, parcel zero eight two two zero three two two zero two one, a legally non-conforming A-one single-family residence district zone parcel. Applicable portion of the zoning code, one six two point five seven zero and one six two point zero nine two, Ward two, the board recommended approval, seven zero.
Ladies and gentlemen, are there, are there, uh, concerns about reading some of these separate or all of them, or anybody have a, a concern? Then I'll, I'll ask the clerk to con, huh? I'll ask her to continue to read them as a group then. I'll ask her to continue to read them as a group then.
Good. Eleven D-two, fifty-eight, October seventeen, Copper Fire M-R-B Development LLC, a request for a sign installation permit in the area of special control for signage at two hundred East Main Street, parcel zero eight two two zero three three nine zero five zero, located in a C-two heavy commercial district. Applic- applicable portion of zoning code, one five five point zero five two, Ward Six, the board recommended approval, seven to zero. Eleven D-three, fifty-nine, October seventeen, Copper Fire M-R-B Development LLC, a request for a special use permit for outdoor dining at two hundred East Main Street, parcel zero eight two two zero three three nine zero five zero, located in a C-two heavy commercial district, applicable portion of zoning code, one six two point two four eight and one six two point five one five, Ward Six, the board recommended approval, seven to zero. Eleven D-four, sixty, October seventeen, Michael Eisenhardt, a request for a special use permit for multifamily dwellings at five eleven East Main Street, parcel zero eight two two zero three three six zero two four, located in a C-two heavy commercial district, applicable section of the zoning code, six zero dash six dash five zero, Ward Two, the board recommended approval, seven zero. Eleven D-five, sixty-one, October seventeen, Balance Coffee and Tea, Marshall Morris, a two-fold request for a special use permit for a liquor license and use variance for outdoor seating for Balance Coffee and Tea at seven thirty-two South Illinois, parcel zero eight two eight zero two three four zero zero four, located in a D-one heavy commercial district, applicable portion of the zoning code, one six two point three zero eight and one six two point five seven zero, Ward Six. Liquor license request, the board recommended approval with the following stipulation, in the name of the applicant only. Outdoor dining request, the board recommended approval, seven to zero.
You've heard the recommendations coming from the zoning board, do I hear a motion to approve, uh, and have the proper ordinance drawn on these, uh, eleven D-one, eleven D-two, eleven D-three, eleven D-four, eleven D-five? Motion by Cincilla, second by Pusa. Any additional questions or comments? All in favor of approving this, these recommendations and have the proper ordinances drawn signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We go on to communications. Can you drink water?
No, always agree for separate-
Can we do them as a group?
Mayor, I've got some questions on twelve C.
On twelve C, so let's do A and B together, okay?
Twelve A, communication from BHS, Kerner House, neighbors of Abend and Garfield, requesting the Old Bellevue Historic Luminary Walk on Saturday, December ninth, five P.M. to nine P.M. Requesting to close East Garfield from Mascota Avenue to Abend Street and Abend Street from East Lincoln to East Garfield. Requesting the streets to be closed from twelve P.M. to ten P.M. for setup and cleanup. This event will have candlelit luminaries lining the street, there will be carolers and choirs, refreshments, open houses and museums, and a virtual street tour. Twelve B, communication from Lindenwood University Bellevue, requesting to hold a five K on Saturday, November seventeenth, twenty seventeen, at nine A.M. with applicable street closures.
Do I hear a motion to approve these first two communications? Motion by Alderman Schaefer, second by Alderman Pusa. Uh, any questions or any other specific, uh, questions about these? All in favor of approving twelve A and twelve B signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You wanna go ahead and read the first one then we'll open for questions.
Twelve C, communication from Boy Scouts of America, uh, America, Greater St. Louis Area Council, to host a Twilight Camp starting on Monday, June twenty-fifth through Thursday, June twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen, from four thirty P.M. to eight thirty P.M. and utilize bicentennial park.
First of all, do I hear a motion to put it on the floor?
Make one.
Motion by Alderman Barfield, do I hear a second? Second by Alderman Cincilla. I'll now open it up for questions. Alderman Randall?
Thank you, sir. Um, is the representative, is Mr. Schuber here from?
He is here. You have a particular question, uh, you wanna come forward, please?
Hi, I've just got a couple of questions for clarification. I understand that, uh, there's going to be a backdrop of an eight-by-ten temporary raised wall, two-by-four, so that's okay?
Correct, yeah.
What will the wall, uh, be comprised of? What material is being-
It's, um, metal, it's, um, it's a, um, a piece of cloth and then has metal within the cloth, it's used for-
For the track.
Correct, yeah. It was bought for the purpose of shooting arrows, BB guns into it.
Okay, is there a berm behind the, uh-
There is, um, there's a thick woods behind it and there is a berm that goes up further down, but no houses. And, and Mr. Alderman Randall, just so if I can interrupt, uh, Captain Ice Camp from the police department went out there with these folks to review it. 'Cause I asked somebody from the police department who was well-versed, take a look at the situation before they designated a suggested area.
Sure, okay. And regarding the point shot, what, uh, what will it be firing?
Uh, beans.
Beans?
Beans, yes.
Okay, like?
Like whatever the cheapest beans at Walmart I can find. Lime, whatever, and we've used dog food in the past, we've gone to beans, so.
Okay. Now, the track that's being used for the BB gun, does it capture the BB inside of it or?
No, they'll be on the ground, uh, we can, uh-
And what track came up?
We have a magnet that we can bring to drag across, it won't get a hundred percent off, but it'll get a lot of them off, so.
Thanks so much, appreciate it.
Any other questions for this young man? Who is a Eagle Scout himself and went through the scouting program here in Bellevue? Yep. His father was scout master and a longtime fire captain, so, uh- Yep. I, I, I know that he's, uh, anxious to bring the program to Bellevue and I'm, I'm glad to see it here in Bellevue as well, I think it's great. So we have a motion and we have a second. Do we have any other questions? I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Hazel.
Aye.
Cincilla.
Aye.
Pusa.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Dittelman.
Aye.
Ga.
Aye.
Steele.
Aye.
Wygott.